Clean my drawers out today.
Hey, thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Inglewood City Council Study Session. We just have one agenda item tonight, and we have some wonderful guests. Thank you so much for being here. Colorado Senior Connections Program Discussion is our one agenda item. We have Chandra Matthews, Director of J. and Rose Phillips Senior Solution Center, as well as with Jewish Family Services, and Paul Ramsey, Pastor of the Mayflower Church, are present to discuss Colorado Senior Connections. We also have Hillary Lenz, who works with A Little Help as well, and Mayflower Church. I'll turn it over to you folks for your presentation.
Great, thank you. I have copies of the PowerPoint presentation that I'm about to go through, so I'll pass those around. As Mayor said, my name is Shandra Matthews, and I'm the Director of the J. and Rose Phillips Senior Solution Center at Jewish Family Service. Oh, I have to click. Let's see if I can make this.
You have to slide it on.
Slide it on. Turn it on first. Simple things. There we go. Oh, great. Thank you. And we'll get into a little bit more about Jewish Family Service, as well as the J. and Rose Phillips Senior Solution Center, as well as A Little Help. But just to guide our discussion tonight, we wanted to first just do introductions of who we are and who we represent, talk a little bit about our project that we're here to present and propose to you, present our ask, what it is we're wanting, proposing, and what do we need in order to make it happen, answer any questions you have, and then go through some next steps. So first and foremost, Jewish Family Service is a nonprofit, nonsectarian organization serving the Denver metro area. We serve people of all faiths, ages, incomes, and abilities, and we have four main program areas. The first is our mental health services, where we provide therapy and care management to individuals, couples, groups, and families. We also have a family safety net department that provides limited financial assistance and care management to individuals and families to prevent homelessness. We have Disability and Employment Services Department that provides work experience, job training, and placement, and care management to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And then we have the J. and Rose Phillips Senior Solution Center, where we offer a comprehensive array of services designed to keep older adults living as independently as possible for as long as possible in the environment of their choosing. So we help people, obviously, in their homes, but also in long-term care facilities, if that's where they have chosen to call home. Our main services are care management, counseling, homemaker. We have a kosher, home-delivered, and community meal program, and we also provide support and special care to Holocaust survivors. One of the other programs, and the one that I'm here to talk with you about, is our Colorado Senior Connections Program. For those of you familiar, CSC, as I'll call it, was one of the first naturally-occurring retirement communities in Colorado. Naturally-occurring retirement communities have pretty specific definitions in terms of the number of older adults in a geographic area, the various supports and services that exist in that area, and so we have been operating that in the cities of Wheat Ridge and Edgewater for, since, well, 2011 in Wheat Ridge, and I think 2008, 2009 in Edgewater. The primary function is really to engage community organizations, businesses, and other residents to help support the older adult residents in that given community. It's proven effective at improving physical health, increasing confidence in an individual's ability to live independently, and increasing social interactions with others. We have a desire to expand this program. I have been at Jewish Family Service for a little over a year now, and this was one of the most exciting programs for me to come in and take over. I've done homemaker services, care management, I've supported programs like this, but something that really works in the community is not something that I'd had the opportunity to experience, and I think it has tremendous potential. And now, Paul is going to tell you a little bit about A Little Help.
So I am the pastor of Mayflower Church. I have the oldest, I think, institution in Inglewood. I think 1904 we began. Many of you know, in 1914, we had a female pastor, which is a pretty big deal for Inglewood, I think. I've been a pastor at Inglewood, at Mayflower, for 16 years. I'm in my 17th year now, and I've been the Executive Director of A Little Help for the past six years. As a small-church pastor, I needed some other things to do, and I was looking for something to be passionate about and to use my experience with. And I grew up in Washington Park, and there was an organization called Washington Park Cares that was, that had been started by some neighbors 11 years ago. These neighbors were, at the time, late octogenarians. Now are moving midway in their, in their mid and late 90s, and, but it'd been a neighbors-helping-neighbors kind of organization, and they were hiring their first full-time employee. I was looking for something else to do besides being a pastor, and I came aboard as the first Executive Director of Washington Park Cares. Shortly after that, we changed our name to A Little Help, because we were just in three neighborhoods around Washington Park. Now we're in all of Denver proper. We have several members in Inglewood. We have a large presence now in Jefferson County, also Chaffey County, which is Salida and Buena Vista, and then, and then we're also in Delta County, in the North Fort Valley, Peonya, and some of those things. And we're launching in Fort Collins this, this year. Shortly after I started, I hired our second full-time employee, which is Hillary Lenz, our Program Director, who is an Inglewood resident, and I think has worked some with y'all on different projects. What we do is very simple. We are A Little Help, and we, I think, in some ways, have a, kind of a programmatic approach to, to being good neighbors. And so, we work a lot with churches, we look, work a lot with other nonprofits, because we do some things that it's difficult for nonprofits to do well, and churches to do well. We, we background check all of our volunteers, but we will pair neighbors with, with seniors to do snow shoveling. We do, a senior will call in and say, "I need a ride to King Supers next Tuesday." We send an email out to probably 250 or 300 volunteers that live within a 15-mile, a 15-minute drive from their house. And the beauty of volunteering for us is, you just say yes, right? You're just getting the email, and you're responding, "I can take Agnes on Tuesday to King Supers." Of course, the, the snow shoveling, you're paired up for the, for the winter, and there's other things like that that, that happen on an ongoing basis. But we, oh, we also do big service Saturdays, where we partner with local schools. So during a service Saturday season, which is the fall and the spring, we'll have, in the Denver, Jefferson County, Arapahoe County area, 800 volunteers on three or four Saturdays. We break them off into groups, and they'll go out to a home that's already been scouted by one of our more background-checked, more skilled handymen or handiwomen, who's gone in and seen what the, you know, how many volunteers it will take, for how many hours to do the yard work, or to, or to clean the clutter, or to wash the windows, or all three. And we'll do things like that. And they're big community-building events. We have partnerships with several of the public and private schools in the Denver and Inglewood area. But we're limited, in that we do these things, but we truly are A Little Help. And so to have a partnership like the one that Chandra and I are proposing today, that would be civic, A Little Help, and a lot more help, that, that you can see that, that Jewish Family Service does, it's really a beautiful way to do it. And we had, I think there's a slide coming up, why Inglewood. And, and Chandra had been working with another city very hard on this, and had come to, to us as, as a partner, because we present some things that, that they don't do a lot of the A Little Help part, and we don't do the A Lot of Help part. And the idea of having a civic partnership as well, with, with a true partner in a city, was very attractive. And so as soon as Chandra called and said, "This particular city isn't working out," I called Mayor Jefferson, because of our relationship, and because of the, because I love Inglewood, and I know Inglewood better than I know any other, any other city. And so I called Mayor Jefferson, and we kind of got the ball rolling to see, to explore these possibilities. I think I'm saying more than I was supposed to, so I'm going to hand it back to, to Shandra.
That's okay, that's okay. We'll get it all covered. And Paul, please feel free to interject as we go.
Never ask a preacher to interject.
Noted, noted. So just setting the stage a little bit, as Paul mentioned, our organizations sort of naturally coexist in the Jefferson County service realm. And we've talked for quite some time about what are some good opportunities for partnership between our organizations. And, and just to set the stage for you a little bit, there's no better time than now to create partnerships and collaborations, and provide some coordination, especially when it comes to helping the older adult population. It's no secret, I'm sure many of you know, that one in four older Coloradans will be 60-plus by 2040. That is, in Arapahoe County, a 100% change between 2015 and 2040. The 75-plus population, which is typically when we see people tapping into services, needing some assistance in their home, in Arapahoe County will have a 210% change between 2015 and 2040. We could scroll closer to the Inglewood demographics. I didn't have those in front of me, but we can certainly look at what, what impact that's having. But I think you probably feel it and see it throughout your community, and obviously throughout the Denver metro region and the state. Colorado's a very popular place to age. People come here for the quality of life, and they stay here for that same reason. And then, like me, they bring their parents to come and age here as well. And quite frankly, I've, I've worked in the older adult service realm for over 20 years, and funding's just not keeping pace with the growth. Where public funding has already seen cuts, and the increased demand is, is just not going to keep pace with what our funding is, and it's becoming increasingly less secure. And private funding is shifting priorities. I can tell you, Jewish Family Service works with a number of foundations throughout the community, and fewer and fewer have a real, specific focus on the older adult population. It's unfortunate, but priorities shift within foundations, and so it makes it challenging. So again, cooperation, coordination, and collaboration versus competition is really the key to serving this population. I also feel, as I said before, that we have to engage the community in the ways that A Little Help and Jewish Family Service, especially our Colorado Senior Connections Program, does. Without finding support from neighbors and others, we just won't be able to keep up with the demand, and we'll lose the ability to help older adults remain in their homes, which is really where they'd most like to be. And hopefully, through that assistance, we can delay the dependence on some of these publicly-funded programs or increased levels of care, starting with A Little Help and sort of tailoring that to meet the needs of individuals through a higher level of care. We have better odds, again, at keeping people in their homes. In addition, I don't know if you've heard, but the baby boomers are aging, and they're really changing the way that senior service organizations establish programming. I like to use my mom as an example. She never really knows that I do this, so don't tell her. But she moved to Colorado to be closer to me and my family, and, and her, well, her grandson, really, let's be honest. But she's 70, and she doesn't look or act 70, but it was very difficult for her to get adjusted to a brand-new community and a new environment. And how do you make friends at 40, much less at 70? And so I told her what I knew, right? Go to your senior center. And she looked at me like I was crazy. And so I think that her lesson to me, as she's been teaching me throughout my life, is that we need to update programs and services to meet the needs of baby boomers, because they're not like our existing population of older adults. The other thing that she has taught me is that you don't have to be homebound, to be socially-isolated. You can still drive and get out, and still not have the social connectedness that you need to in order to age in a healthy fashion. So I think the project that we want to present to you today not only serves the older adult population that is currently in need of service, but looks to adjust to what baby boomers will need as they also age, and remove some of the stigma attached to the services that are provided, and, and move from a crisis intervention to a more preventative method of providing service. So, what's our vision? What's our program? Well, when Paul and I sat down to meet, I don't think it was on any of our, either of our agendas to kind of create this new idea in how we might do this. But you may have heard that there's a new foundation in town, the Next 50 Foundation, who is funding initiatives, innovative initiatives from organizations catering to older adult population. They are having two rounds for funding each year. They just closed one round of funding and have another one coming up in February, February, March-ish. And so Paul and, obviously, our organization serves seniors. We were interested in this new potential for funding, and both exploring it in different ways, and then started talking a little bit about how we might be able to complement one another's programs. What we learned through Colorado Senior Connections is that a NORC, well, a wonderful service model, is just not always exactly how it's defined. Sometimes communities are not so naturally occurring. Sometimes you have to bring in services and organizations from a ways away to, to provide support to the seniors in that community. A NORC is also designed to have an organization come in, coordinate all these other organizations, start all these programs and activities, and then leave, and miraculously, people keep doing everything you did when you were there. We've found that that's not true. You really need to have a presence in the community, continuing to run those programs and solicit those services, so on and so forth. What Paul and A Little Help bring to the table is the opportunity to cater to some of the needs that are, it's harder to find, transportation services, for one. You probably know and hear a lot about the challenges that, that older adults face in, in connecting with transportation services. And some of those just little help types of services that, that their organization provides creates a wonderful, wonderful balance to the more intensive care management that, and service coordination that Jewish Family Service can establish. In addition, having a strong activity coordination, so in addition to the service Saturdays that Paul mentions, having those community-wide events, yard cleanup days, where we would work with the city, and we currently do, in the city of Inglewood, to really help older adults do some of those things that they just can't do on their own anymore. It doesn't mean they can't live independently. It doesn't really even mean that they need any assistance in the home. They just can't cut down branches and remove debris the way that they used to be able to. So Colorado Senior Connections creates a perfect framework for developing partnerships and implementing individualized programs that really meet the needs of the growing population. The other thing that I've learned in implementing the NORC in Wheat Ridge and Edgewater is that we really need that civic engagement, the city involved in promoting and participating in the, the project that we're taking on. We have probably a little more engagement through the city of Edgewater. They help us coordinate the, the yard cleanup days. They help us coordinate a snow shoveling program, and they really are great about making referrals to our programs. Wheat Ridge is, is equally supportive from a financial standpoint. Neither supports us tremendously or fully to run the program, but contributing to the program shows an investment and, and a desire to have us involved in their community and to provide that support. So the activities, again, can connect older adults to their peers in the community, in addition to connecting to the community in general. So just as I said, it's kind of a senior center without walls, right? You have a wonderful bricks-and-mortar senior center, but for those older adults who really don't want to go to a senior center, can we go to them? Can we connect with them? And can we get to some of those more isolated and homebound older adults? In addition, we can, like I said, coordinate on citywide service events, but also create opportunities for programs in the schools, and try to look at an intergenerational component to the program. In Edgewater, for several years, we recently lost funding for the program, but we implemented a mentorship program with the life skills class at Jefferson High School. And so the, I think they're all seniors, but in the high school, the students interacted with the mentors that we trained, and, and, well, we got the volunteers and trained them, and they participated in that class. And not only was it a huge success for the school, it, it was something that our volunteers were devastated to learn was going away. And so it's an opportunity, again, to engage across the generations. The volunteer-driven service delivery model that A Little Help brings to the table is really about getting neighbors to help neighbors, and getting community to interact with one another and live a little more harmoniously, and provide some of the supportive services that not many community organizations do, including transportation. Well, we have a lot of organizations that provide transportation. It's just never enough. But yard work, home organization, little things like that that can make a big difference between someone remaining in their own home and having to look for alternatives for housing.
And I, one of the things that I think about this model is, many of the seniors that you can imagine, your neighbors, don't want to get on a large van, you know, that has senior something or something, something on the side. They would much, the idea of getting into their, their neighbor's Subaru, and having that private conversation, and having that, that sense is great. Most, more, more than half of our volunteers, who are drivers and are those, are folks in their 60s and 70s. And so that idea that they're dipping their toe in the water of, for a service Saturday, when they're, they're giving rides, or they're doing other type of friendly, fighting-isolation-type-of-companion visits and things like that, the idea that then maybe they're not going to climb the ladder to clean their windows, or to clean out their gutters, or to do some of the things that may put them in physical danger, because they're having these, this social interaction with their neighbors, there's just kind of a slow, as, as Chandra talked about, a slow immersion into the aging, you know, the next stage of aging, which all of us are doing, right? So I, I think that that, that piece of it being very natural, having a component of, it's kind of dignity, letting them set their own, set their own idea of what it means to, to be connected, and to get their rides, and to do those things. And then, as they go on to some of the next stages, that they need more staff-heavy, more professional kind of guidance in their aging process. They still are, are working through a piece that's, that's fighting isolation, and that's, that's, that's kind of bridging the gap for them in their neighborhood. And I know that Inglewood is, like all of the rest of the Denver area, extremely gentrified, right? And there's, so there's a great, the, the idea of, of our longest-time residents becoming invisible on their own block is happening all over the place. And we're doing our best at Jewish Family Service and at A Little Help to make our seniors more visible, and to make them more of an asset than, you know, than a burden.
You're fine. So our proposal, JFS and A Little Help would like to implement the Colorado Senior Connections Project in the city of Inglewood. Jewish Family Service would serve as the lead agency in a multi-year funding application to the Next 50 Initiative that I just talked about. The project would include a one-year design and implementation phase to allow for community building, so finding activity sites, recruiting volunteers, hiring necessary staff within our organizations, and coordinating, developing various councils and commissions devoted to an older adult population. Throughout the project, JFS will conduct ongoing evaluation of the program to determine the impact and provide evidence of the effectiveness in engaging the community in senior care. So one of the things that we have really started in the last five years is working to prove the effectiveness of this program. And I want to take that to the next level, to be able to not only show what we're able to do from a, a service standpoint, in terms of what ability we have at increasing individuals' confidence in, in living independently, but also looking at social connectedness, and what is the impact that that social connectedness has on overall health and wellness in a particular committee, you know, community. I really think that this could be replicable. I think it will show great success, and I think Inglewood could be, along with us, on the cutting edge of developing something that could spread like wildfire through the Denver metro region. So why Inglewood? Well, as Paul said, I had been talking with others, and, and just sort of by happenstance, because I know people in other communities. But really, Inglewood came to the top of our radar in talking with organizations from pretty early on, in large part because you're sort of a perfect-sized community in which to do a project like this. You're not overwhelmingly large, but you're not so small that we can't have any sort of effective, reliable results from data and statistics that we might gather. But you also, you're here, you're listening to me right now. You're engaged in this conversation, and you have a, a perfect combination of commitment to older adults, as well as to the younger generation that is moving into your community in leaps and bounds. From my perspective, it's an intergenerational program developer's dream. I think that you also have an outstanding investment in community engagement opportunities. Just in talking with Paul, the mayor, and Eric, a few weeks ago, I learned about all the different things that you're doing in the community already, and there are some really easy things from which to springboard. As this community continues to evolve, it's really important that you continue engaging all your constituents, and as Paul said, especially those older adults who might feel a little pushed out by all the changes happening in, in the community. This isn't a picture of Inglewood, you all probably know. But it was like a good example of kind of what's happening across Denver, and, and in part, sort of what's happening in, in the world for older adults. In many of the communities, including Edgewater, where we are currently, people have a ton of assets and, and resources in their house, but they don't have the funds to really help with the necessities of life that, that you face when you grow older. So I believe that Colorado Senior Connections and our partnership with A Little Help can help you maintain that commitment to your constituents, and really empower them to get more engaged in the community, and show other communities how it's done. What do we need from you? So first and foremost, to have a really strong application to the Next 50 Foundation, I don't think you have to have this, but it's certainly more appealing to have a formalized partnership with Jewish Family Service and with A Little Help. We would, as I said, really like to have that civic involvement, and so participation from city staff in the project's Leadership Council. In our programs, in our CSC program, we have a Leadership Council that really is comprised of all the formal partners around the project table, and then we have program-level meetings that involve other businesses and organizations that might be involved on a more peripheral level. The Leadership Council is really that governance structure of how this project is running, what's working, what's not, how are we tracking data, so on and so forth. We'd want city staff assistance in coordinating citywide activities, and get input from the city staff regarding programs and services. We'd want access to available city data and statistics, and obviously would share ours with you. Access to existing or assistance in developing councils or commissions focused on older adults. That will really help further guide the program, and the program, and the various activities that we do, engagement opportunities we provide, so on and so forth. Connections to other organizations or businesses that you believe should be involved in this project in the city, and then support in looking for a long-term sustainability plan. So that doesn't necessarily mean financial assistance. We wouldn't turn it away. But assistance with grant writing and, and pursuit of other funding options would certainly be something we'd like help with. So, before we get to next steps, I want to, oops, answer any questions.
Counsel, questions at this time?
I have a question.
Yes.
Let me log in for a second. So how do you define actively engaging seniors? Is it re, re bouts of engagement with some service of, of yours, a month, a week? How do you quantify How do you quantify, what means actively engaging?
So, the activity coordination piece is where we provide engagement opportunities for older adults in the community. So, those might be social engagement opportunities, creating a happy hour for older adults to attend and mix and mingle with one another. It might be educational.
But what means active?
What means active?
And I'm taking this from, Jewish Family Service has created the Colorado Senior Connections Program, which believes that older adults benefit from actively engaging in the community. So, you talked about, a lot about evaluating and you-
Right, right, right.
You project success with this program as you've seen in Wheat Ridge and Edgewater.
Sure.
How are you defining that success, how are you measuring it?
So, it's that, the participation in the, the community engagement opportunity. So, actively attending community engagement opportunities in the community. We also provide care management, care coordination services and we can link people either to the services that our organization provides or if we don't have the service they need, we link them obviously to other organizations as well. But that actively engaging people is really all about that activity coordination, the social, recreational, and educational opportunities that we create for seniors. And that's one of the key pieces. We've been able to measure to some extent how many sort of social interactions they've made, but really taking it to the next step of what those interactions have done for them. And we're working in conjunction with several other organizations on an intergenerational project and have some connection to the, excuse me, to the University of Denver, who has a whole social connectedness element of some surveys that they're doing that we'd like to incorporate in this project.
Thanks. And so, how long have you been working with Edgewater?
We've been in Edgewater, I think it's since 2007. I would have to, I'm sorry, I should know, but off the top of my head, but since about 2007, it was the first NORC that JFS established in Colorado.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. Do you have any other partnerships in Arapahoe County?
We do. We actually, we, I haven't even announced this to my staff, so they're listening, holy cow. But we were just awarded a contract-
Just going live.
It's gone. We were just awarded a contract with Arapahoe County Aid to Agencies to provide care management services throughout. We've also talked with, and I've been a part of the Arapahoe County Council on Aging for quite some time, connecting with other organizations in the area. We've been talking with the city of Centennial about potential partnerships as well, so, but other senior service organizations that serve the area. We collaborate regularly with all of those organizations, or many of those organizations, I should say.
Excellent. And then, how are, are you mostly funded through grants and donations or how is-
Correct. Yeah, so, the vast majority of our support comes from private foundations, but we also have some government grants. We receive a grant for homemaker assistance through the Area Agency on Aging, has it Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments. We also have funding from the Claims Conference to provide support to Holocaust survivors in the Denver metro area. And then, we also have a government grant through the Ryan White Program to provide homemaker assistance to individuals living with HIV and AIDS.
Okay. And then, in other similar-sized communities, how much staff time is required? Does it just vary?
Between, we've sort of merged our Edgewater and Wheat Ridge program and we have a part-time project coordinator, project manager, and a full-time activity coordinator and a full-time care manager to provide that activity coordination as well as the care management assistance needed. So, I mean, maybe between Edgewater and Wheat Ridge, we might be looking at what we'd need for the Inglewood project or some sort of extension of those staff.
Okay, great. And then, how, we have a lot of other groups in our community that I think would be great partners. How do you typically work together with other partners in the communities where you work?
So, the program-level meetings that I referenced, so the leadership council, we, the grant that we work on currently in the Wheat Ridge Colorado Senior Connections Program is through the Colorado Health Foundation. And they really helped us establish a blueprint for how to implement this program and what was needed. And part of sort of the ups and downs of that project was, well, we need some governance structure and so, the leadership council was developed. But then, we also still wanted to engage the public and the community and other organizations outside of just who those formal partners were. So, we also established program-level meetings where we invite senior service organizations from around the metro area, not just those who cater to Edgewater or Wheat Ridge, but from throughout the area, to come together and talk about the services that they provide. So, I mean, it only enhances what we can do, right? It's an extension of us, but certainly welcome to incorporate them in whatever way we can. We've currently, in our Wheat Ridge project, have a database system that all of our partners can enter information into, because that's one sort of obstacle, right? In any partnership is getting access to who's helping who and who's doing what with who. And there are some obstacles with that, I'm not going to lie, like data collection and collaboration across agencies is challenging. But, but we have sort of the infrastructure to work towards that if we can sort of sort through all the other issues that come up.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Rosen.
Thank you for presenting. I have a lot of questions. I'm very, very excited about this. I've just, I've been wanting to see us do something around the aging population that we continue to keep here, which is wonderful, and then more moving in. And I don't know, Manager Keck, if we have the data that we did back before, probably 2015, because we did something with Dr. Cog and their Task Force on Aging. So, we have some data already that's pretty, pretty obvious that we're, we're a really high-density of older population, more than some of our surrounding, like even Littleton and south. So, that would be really important data for you to have in this. But a couple of questions I have is, first of all, who are you working with that do you?
The Graduate School of Social Work Program, we've also, I've had some sort of initial meetings with the Nobel Institute on Aging.
I was going to say that.
Yeah. And they, we, we thought about submitting a pilot project to them to do this sort of very kind of, so I worked at Dr. Cog at the Area Agency on Aging for about 12 years, so...
I have met you before. It was through that. I knew I knew you.
And so, one of the things that I started during my time at Dr. Cog was, how do we prove that what we do makes a difference in the lives of older adults? How are we, how do we become the thing, the solution, that kept them from higher levels of care? And it's really challenging to try to prove that, because we deliver meals, right? How do I know that that meal, that was the one thing, in addition to all the other things that are potentially going on for this individual, that was the one thing that made a difference? And so, we've had conversations with staff from the Graduate School of Social Work and the Nobel Institute on, could we do something? And quite frankly, I delayed it because we were in the midst of overhauling our evaluation practices and protocols and some of our assessments and whatnot. And I wanted a good year of like-
Sure.
-test data before we got to that.
Okay, well, that's-
But yes, that might be our next step.
That's helpful, because I was just looking at the Next 50 Initiative and they are, I mean, they're looking, applicants have to have a strong evidence of collaboration, but also evidence of impact.
Yes.
And there has to be some process for that, so using another, using a university could be really helpful in finding a partnership there.
And so, we have existing data and information from our project in Wheat Ridge because we've been collecting data. I'd like to, as I said, take it a step further. And one of the things that in meeting with the CEO of the Next 50, they're open to being part of what establishes that, right? And allowing us to kind of test some things out to see if we can really create some valid results.
So, there are a couple of things we also have been in the past, and I don't know if Mayor has recently signed a Cities of Service, and I don't know if you've ever signed that document to keep us on that list, I haven't even looked to see if we are.
Yeah.
But our director, Dorothy Hargrove, has been the one who's sort of kept that link going and I don't know if that's really active or not, but Toni and her have worked together on it. But anyway, we do have this City of Service kind of focus that could be, and it's, we've had a past partnership with Metro Volunteers with their website to link in. Have you done anything like that before to link, or do you do stuff with Metro Volunteers for that?
We do. We're a close partner with Metro Volunteers.
Do you know that we had a portal where you could go on as an Inglewood citizen and find the city of Inglewood and all of the, we could renew, I don't know if we're-
We are keeping up with it.
We are, okay. So, it's still there. I haven't gone on for a year. But this could be a really great partnership with that as well. The other thing, I have a couple of questions about finances. One would be just insurance and thinking about how does this work? Who takes responsibility when a citizen is driving another citizen somewhere and something happens, you know, and how does that work? And then, yeah, that's the first one.
Well, in the state of Colorado, it makes it much easier to do what we do because of the Good Samaritan Law. And so, we have our insurance through the Colorado Nonprofit Association, which is an umbrella over and above what the Good Samaritan Law would cover. But I don't think you could do this in a more litigious state. This one, this, the Good Samaritan Law makes it much easier for us to do that.
What I've heard is the more formalized things become, the more litigious it becomes. So, if it's just me taking my neighbor because, and I have an accident, it's less likely. But if it's an organization with names on it in a city where, or cities are harder to sue for a certain amount. But anyway, I'm just concerned about what that would be. But then, how much are you looking at for this grant and what's the project, Eric? Because it sounds like it can't just be to support an organization, it has to be to support a project. So, do you have something in mind right now or?
Well, it's expanding our concept of Colorado Senior Connections, not only in including A Little Help as a partner in that, but also an expansion of the service area. So, it's taking what we're doing in Edgewater and Wheat Ridge, adding a lot more to it and implementing it in a new and different area. And in conversations, what they're looking for, while they're not going to fund direct service, they want innovative ways to get service to seniors. And this is a way to do that. In addition, it's also an opportunity to look at, what does it mean to get engaged in the community and decrease social isolation and combat some of those factors that accompany what that means. It's an opportunity too for intergenerational collaboration and participation, which is another thing that they're very, very interested in. They're very keen, in my meeting with Margaret, on looking at the baby boomer population as well and what can we try to do to begin serving that population? So, not just looking at historically, you know, if we wanted, if they funded services, we would probably go in and ask for funding to support our homemaker program that has a waiting list of over 100 people, you know, that sort of thing. But they want to do things in a different way and I really think that this is an opportunity to do that.
So, what are we looking at for, I mean, are you, you're asking for us to actually join a partnership or support by a letter so that you together can go after this?
I think it's more powerful to have a formalized partnership. And so, you'll see in the next steps that looking at, if you feel prepared to move forward in JFS staff, A Little Help staff, and city staff, working to develop an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, I think that strengthens the application tremendously. I think it also shows commitment to the program from all of our agencies in really implementing this and moving it forward.
So, when, what I can't figure out from their website, what, it's 25, up to $25,000 that you can ask for? Is that right?
Oh, no. From the Next 50 Initiative?
Yeah.
That's only if you're, you haven't been audited.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can actually-
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
How high can you go?
A lot, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know exactly. I mean, we haven't gone so far as to start putting together a budget. I mean, part of that is working with you all to see what your needs might be, collaborating with Paul in terms of staffing needs there, JFS obviously, and putting together all of that information. So, what they are interested in doing is doing multi-year projects, which not many foundations do anymore. And so, that is a tremendous opportunity in and of itself. In addition, they're allowing for a year of implementation and development and so, or development and implementation. So, we could spend time really finessing what it is exactly we're going to do and how we're going to do that. If we were ready to launch before that year is up, we could do that. We can also ask for tiered amounts in our requests, so less in that implementation phase and then more money as the project grows. I think we can add components to it. If we don't want to start with some opportunity to engage the school systems, we don't have to, but we could incorporate that as a future project in year two or three, for instance. So, I see this as being a significant ask, but I can't necessarily give you a number without sort of our agencies collaborating a bit on that.
One last question.
Sure.
I know we have someone over there that has, and that would be the grant-making process itself. I don't know that we have staff that actually, we don't, we don't have a social service arm of this kind of-
We have a grant-writing team.
Do you have a team and are you successful at it and what do you do?
We are.
It sounds like you've had some setbacks with Wheat Ridge where you've lost money. So, what happens if we get something going?
We actually haven't lost money in Wheat Ridge.
Oh, okay.
We've sort of shifted funding categories. So, our funding through the Colorado Health Foundation, they're one of the foundations that have shifted their priorities. And so, when they did that, there wasn't so much a place for the Colorado Senior Connections Program, but they helped us find one and helped us work through an application that really fit kind of a next project phase for them. The other piece that I think has been a challenge is coming across as a NORC, right? The NORC is supposed to, you're supposed to go in, you set all this stuff up, you leave, and it's good to go. And that's just not reality. We really need to remain in the community to help continue that collaboration and coordination and allow those services and systems to grow. So, that's had an impact on funding for that program as well. But a lot of it has just been the shifts in kind of foundation priorities. And so, I think this is a, is a good opportunity for us. But yes, we have a grant-writing team and we're quite successful. The budget for the Senior Solutions Department is just under $4,000 and a lot of that is from foundation support. And obviously, government grants require grant writers as well, so, yeah, we've got a great team.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berentone.
I appreciate Councilmember Olson's questions. Some of them have touched on some of my concerns. I know that we've tried several over the last decade to try and do similar programs where you can go ahead and, you know, help with somebody's yard. I'm part of an organization that does that in Littleton and kind of partners a little bit with the city on a very limited basis. But the liability of it, when you're a church, there's a, Good Samaritan fits in there. When you're a government agent entity, like Councilmember Olson said, you're just more likely to get sued. And when people have a different expectation, when there is a partnership with a government entity and our responsibility. And so, I really would like to have some more information on what the vetting process would be from our city attorney. I would like to know what our liability would be. I mean, she's not going to be able to answer that now, but I would like to get some of that information on exactly where we would be putting our, putting ourselves out. I mean, if something, who would be responsible for that, who would have the oversight for that? And if we have to have somebody in the city doing that, whether we're going to, how much time and energy and money that's going to be? I mean, we all know what it's like. Now, nobody names a building after anybody till they're dead. There's a reason for that. I mean, with the best intentions and no matter how well somebody does, at one point, there's got to be a certain amount of oversight in order to know what's going on and how would that look like if we went ahead and entered into this with you guys? The Colorado Senior Connections, Councilmember Olson brought up about the Wheat Ridge and money, and you have an organization that's already going and I really would like to see, you have several that have kind of gone on already. And I would like to see the financials for how that's looked. I mean, you've already developed them. How are they doing? Where have there been some problems? And like, like she said, you had to regear in Wheat Ridge. Problem is, is just like the ARPAS or Colorado, Inglewood Trolley now, Colorado Trolley, now we're going to transport the whole state. Once you start providing a service and it's perceived that it is a government-sponsored service, and that's exactly what this would be because we would be partners, and something happens to you guys, then we have, we have a tendency to want to fill that gap and feel the responsibility and the obligation to make sure that that void is filled. And that void is filled with taxpayer dollars and our staff's time and money and energy here. We have certain boards and commissions, well, the Planning and Zoning Board that hasn't met for two months because our staff is overwhelmed. So, I really am going, trying to be very sensitive to the amount of time and energy that this would take and what our responsibility is for the oversight of this. The money that you were talking about, how, you touched on that a little again with Councilmember Olson's question on that, but I would like to have a little bit more idea of exactly actually how sustainable it would be before we enter- actually how sustainable it would be before we enter into a partnership. There is a sensitivity, and the reasons we have the separation between charitable organizations and the government is a lot of it information. And the fact that we would be sharing information, I think, would cause some people concern, that it would be being shared both from a private charitable organization and the church doing charitable work in our community in partnership with us, that you would be, have access to information that we have and that we would have access to information you have, I think, might actually lead some people to have some concern, and I'd like to explore that a little bit more.
Sure. To clarify that, we would not provide to you individual information in terms of like a constituent or a resident who is receiving specific services, more about outcomes, data and statistics. So, reporting on how many activities, for instance, we provided, how many hours of assistance we provided, and then kind of the outcomes of that, what, what opportunities did we have to increase a person's confidence in living independently? So, that's more the data sharing that, that I'm talking about than really individually identifiable information. We obviously, as a coven entity for some of our programs and services, would not be able to share specific information about individuals with you.
I'd just like to see that vetted out a little bit more.
Sure.
So that we could have a little bit more information on exactly what that would, what that would look like, especially if you, I'm the liaison to the Inglewood Housing Authority. I mean, how would that look if you went into any of their programs that are going on there? I would like to vet it out a little bit more on what the parameters would be and how we would handle that.
Thank you. Got about a 10-minute warning here. Councilmember Russell.
Just, I thank you for coming and for your vision and sharing that. One of the questions that I have is, when you're seeking funding, what does the funding go for? Does it go for the programs? Does it go for?
There's a whole lot that goes into it. The vast majority of our funding goes to staff. So, it's, it's hard sometimes, I think, for, for some funders to get their head around something like care management. It's not like, I didn't provide a meal, right? Like, there's nothing that you can hold on to. But care management and, and care coordination, the explanation of that service, and, you know, obviously, the data, the outcomes that come from providing that service are, are the tangible thing that people get to hold on to. But it, it comes for staff positions who provide the direct service assistance, so activity coordination, care management for Paul, coordinating volunteers. But then, there are components, obviously, of overhead. So, handling a grant inquires our accounting staff, or you have to have HR, help us hire people. So, I'm sort of overhead from an administrative standpoint, insurance costs, all of those things. So, we typically, at Jewish Family Service, I'm trying to think of what kind of our administrative overhead percentages. I can get back to you on that with a specific, specific percentage, but it's quite low in comparison to other organizations.
Okay.
As a nonprofit, we try to be lean in that way.
All right. And the little help piece, I mean, we're, we don't have a fleet of vehicles. They're, you know, the, the volunteers are providing that, they're providing the gas, they're providing, and so, for every 100 seniors we serve, there's 200 volunteers and one staff person, basically, is how our funding, that's the, the breakdown of how we, of how our funding would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Postle.
Yes. I'll echo the thanks. I really appreciate the visit. It sounds like tremendously admirable work. Credit to you. My first question, Pastor Ramsey, regards to the background check, and it sounded as though there's different layers or depths of that background check. Can you expand on that a little?
Well, if it's a driver, well, if it's a dri, I don't ever need one of those.
These are new. They actually work.
If, if, if the person is a driver, that's a CBI with the, with the, well, it's a, it's a national background check with, with no fingerprinting or any of those, those things. If it's one of our caregiver respite people who's in the person's home for a long period of time, one-on-one, that's a federal fingerprint, you know, the, the whole, the whole type of background checks. So, that's, and then, we also have access to all of their driver records and all those things as well.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Matthews, on the what do we need from you section, there is a mention towards access to available city data and statistics. Are there any particular city data sets you'd be looking towards there?
Just demographics. So, really specific information about your older adult population. Again, nothing to drill down, but just, it's always helpful to have information when submitting a proposal about how many older adults live in your community. We need to find, define what we consider an older adult and, and kind of, I mean, as deep as we can go in that information.
Thank you. And I, I think that I have some of the same questions that build on my fellow councilmembers here. I'm not sure if I quite totally tangibly understand what would be needed from council, and it sounds like this is still embryonic, and, and you guys don't have those numbers either. But I would imagine that I would care for some of the same numbers that you were seeking and yourself as well, Councilmember Russell. But it sounds like a tremendously positive organization, and I'm certainly looking forward to hearing more.
I think from a tangible perspective, what we're looking for is funding from Next 50. And so, we're not necessarily here seeking funding in any way. I mean, financial support shows investment, right? But really, I think the investment from the city would be just staff resources in, in helping establish the things that I listed in the, so what do we need from you? Just having some guidance from the city staff to help us know your constituents a little bit better.
Thank you again.
And I think that there's, obviously, there's hurdles. You know, there's going to be some ways that we have to make sure that, that we're defining parameters so that for liability purposes, for all those other reasons. I also, I know that there are elder citizens of Inglewood that need this, and it's a, and so, to overcome those hurdles, I think, is, is very important. And I, I think that we, to not do it right is worse than doing it at all, I think. But if we can, if we can really get through some of these, these pieces, I think that we'll be creating something that's really beautiful and that's engaging folks that, that feel as if they, nobody wants to engage with them. And so, that, that's the piece that I think that, to remember as we're, as we're going through these things, to try to find a voice for folks that don't feel like to have one is important.
Thank you. I see we've got some other sort of council, you know, questions or comments, and I just wanted to make a few and, you know, try to keep us on schedule here. You know, first of all, I just wanted to echo my colleagues' comments regarding thanking you for coming down with, I think, a wonderful idea for our community, and, and it is something that kind of needs to be flushed out a little bit further. Great presentation. I, I would agree with Pastor here in that we have substantial need when it comes to senior services. You know, and I know that Little Help is a great organization and Jewish Family Services, you know, they, they do wonderful work, not only in, in the community, but as our region as a whole. So, you know, thank you, I guess, for what you do in that regard. You know, I think here in the city of Inglewood, you know, we've talked a lot about wishing that we could provide more in the way of social services, particularly with our senior sort of population. You know, aging obviously is, is a major issue here in the city of Inglewood. We've really been a big part of that silver tsunami, and I think being the representative on the Dr. Cog Agency, representing the city of Inglewood, which of course is our AAA, our area agency on aging, I think has kind of brought some of those issues a little bit more sort of front and center in my mind. And I, I know that we have really, against, really substantial need in, in those arenas. And I think this, you know, even though our demographics are changing, we are seeing a shift to a, a younger demographic, we've talked about the increase in our millennial populations, but still, again, substantial need. As I was going door-to-door, I mean, I see so many of these people who, who, like you said, are, are the senior people on their block and who are just slowly not, not visible and not engaged, and, and they just need a little help. And that's why I love the name of the organization. And just to, you know, maybe give a little bit of historical information, I know that Paul's group has done great work over in Wash Park, and, you know, I've been in his ear for some time saying, hey, why don't we bring some of the services to Inglewood? So, again, love to see that, some ideas on how we can do that. I think the timing is perfect, obviously, with this next-gen opportunity. And I think this model makes a ton of sense for us as we move forward, thinking about our social issues and how we provide social services, of partnering with somebody who understands service delivery, understands how to get funding and where funding resources come from, and how to define success. I think that, you know, if we went at this sort of on our own, I think we would struggle with some of those issues, and I think we have some experts right in our backyard who are willing to sort of partner with us. I heard a few concerns, and I think what, what I'm going to suggest is we continue this conversation to another date here in a couple of weeks. We'll try to prioritize this so that we can keep this conversation going. I think I heard some requests for, you know, some more information about, from our city attorney's office regarding liability issues. I heard some requests for some financial information from the organizations that we would be looking to partner with, as well as some of the projects, to try to understand some sustainability of those. We also had, I think, some concerns regarding privacy and info sharing and those kind of things, and so perhaps we can get a little more information, again, maybe from our city attorney's office on that. Maybe two quick questions is, I think we asked a question, and maybe it was a little more related to staff time, or trying to get our ideas around, how much city staff time do you think we need? You know, I know that, you know, there were a few categories sort of named here, and we said, well, we don't do great, you know, we don't have a lot of resources in that arena. And so, maybe Councilmember Martinez's question, I felt like maybe was kind of geared towards, hey, how much, you know, staff time do you really need from the city of Inglewood? And maybe we can kind of clarify that. I think another great point was making sure we connect you guys with our other local partners here, other organizations. School district really comes front and center in my mind. You know, I don't know if we've had an opportunity to meet with anybody over there, but I would love to connect you guys to try to get this conversation going with them simultaneously so that we can get as much buy-in in the community as possible or an idea like this if we do decide to move forward. Other questions or concerns as we wrap this up?
I actually was going to try and move us forward on something too, so I would just make it very quick. I'd be very glad to meet with anybody else on the staff team and them to kind of, I have about 10 more questions I didn't want to take time tonight that are also, I think, important that we answer, and others probably have them, I'm sure, as well. But I would love to work with you to see if, if there's a way. At the very least, I can imagine us being supportive of a letter of support that you two join together and do something in Inglewood. I'm not going to speak for everybody on that, but to me, it seems like a starting level that we can get to that point.
Sure.
And then figure out what else could we do if we did more. But I think it's going to take some time to ramp it up. It looks like the application process is February or March, because they're going to announce their next ones in February.
Yep.
So, we have, we have to get some things done before then.
Yes.
Because we've got to have a good grant if we're going to, if we're going to, well, you need to if you're going to go after this.
Yes.
If we're involved, us too. But I would, I would love to help to spearhead it. I think it's going to take some time.
Agreed.
It was one of the reasons why I ran again for office, is I really want to see us do something. We are growing in our millennials and our aging, in the ones in between, which I'm exiting, is, is definitely where we don't have as many, which is why our schools have difficulty filling with kids.
Excellent. Any final comments from you guys?
No, just happy to meet with anyone at any time, and so, I have cards that I can provide as well, and we can talk maybe a little bit about next steps, or I'm not sure who to come back and kind of formalize some of these responses, but happy to do that.
My thought is, we'll get Eric and city staff to get back in touch with you as soon as we can get you back on the agenda. I know we have a mayor-manager meeting set tomorrow. We can discuss scheduling and timelines and those kind of things and get back with you and try to keep this ball rolling.
All right.